Good morning, everyone. A call to order, a meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. Welcome, and to start us off, we will have the roll call, Madam Clerk.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Green.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Merchant.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Hildenbrand.
Here.
Honstein. Burl.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Sparks. McLeod.
Here.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King. LeGrand.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Wooden.
Here.
Pakla.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Boujack.
Present.
Chair Stuck.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen members present, two absent, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much for our invocation, and we'll call in Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was thinking for the last week or so what exactly I wanted to say this morning. For those of you that know me, you know that although I was raised in a Christian household today, I don't consider myself to be religious, although I do consider myself to be spiritual, and a lot of that comes from my background as being raised as a Christian. And so, instead of reading from a passage from any book of faith, I started thinking about something that, a topic or an idea that ties us all together from all of our different backgrounds, all of our different histories, and the people who call Kent County home. And so, I thought about a paper that I wrote a couple of years back. This was in 2019 before the pandemic happened. And the topic of the paper was "The Effect of Ethnic Nationalism on States." And there was a quote that I looked up for that paper from a French historian from the nineteenth century. And what this French historian said back in 1870 was, "What distinguishes nations is neither race nor language. Men feel in their hearts that they belong to the same people when they have a community of ideas, of interests, of affections, of memories and hopes. This is what makes a fatherland. This is why men want to march together, work together, live and die for one another. The fatherland is what one loves." And so, I thought that that was a perfect encapsulation of the work that all governments do in the United States, whether they're local or state or federal. Again, this is a nation of over three hundred million people with people from all parts of the world. And although there are vast differences between the people who call this state, this county, home, that idea that this is where we chose to live, this is where we chose to live and work, and for some people to raise our families, that is an idea that ties us all together. I concluded that paper by saying, again, "A world divided by language and race is one destined for conflict and regressive policies that keeps the status quo alive. Instead of looking to the past, one ripe with divisiveness and fractured nations, people should look to a united future, as a world united by common interests, ideas, and hopes, along with the modern principle of what constitutes true nationalism, and that is one that will overcome any obstacle, impediment, or disagreement to guarantee the survival of its people." And so, with that, I'd like for you all to take a second to say a short prayer, if you'd like, in your own faith, before we continue our meeting. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our next item is Special Order of Business, and this morning we have Janelle Vandergrift, our Food Policy Coordinator from the Kent County Food Policy Council, and good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, and thank you, Lisa, for helping set this all up today. I am the Coordinator of the Kent County Food Policy Council, and I'm here today to share a little bit more about some work we've been doing, a food system assessment for Kent County. So you should have one of these in front of you. I will warn you that in ten minutes, it's a lot to go through, so it's going to be coming at you real fast. Know that I hope to come back and share some of our future work, and I would always be open to a meeting to discuss more. So, the Kent County Food Policy Council exists to strengthen and grow a local good food system in Kent County. So, we are a subcommittee of the Essential Needs Task Force, and the Essential Needs Task Force sits within the United Way. So, the Food Policy Council started two years ago. We have eighteen seats with representatives from different sectors. So, we've been just kind of digging into the work now. It was a result of many years of effort on behalf of our formation team. So, the other day, when I was dropping off these reports, I saw your mission statement, and I thought I would just pull it up here today because I think that the mission statement we have for a good food system really has a lot to do with a mission statement of the county, and I really wanted to draw your attention to the quality of life piece. So I think we'd all agree that food is a significant contributor to our quality of life, and so therefore, we need to be thinking thoughtfully and planning around our food system for Kent County, both for now and the future. So, today, I will be presenting a little bit about our assessment. I'll tell you a bit about the process, the structure of this report, go through some key findings. There's going to be a lot more within this report, so I'd encourage you to take a look at it afterwards, and then I'll tell you a little bit more about our plans for next steps. So, we were able, as a result of a grant from the Michigan Health Endowment Fund, to commission a consulting firm called New Venture Advisors to work on this report, this assessment, as well as a food policy assessment for Kent County, where we could identify the gaps and opportunities in Kent County, and then help us develop a food system plan. And the food system plan will be a result of community engagement that we do throughout the county to identify what are the policy recommendations which would advance the food system that we know that would provide a quality of life for all of those who live in Kent County. So, we are right now at the pink arrow. That's where we are, and the policy assessment and the food system plan are coming later on. So, we don't need to dig into this timeline. I just want to kind of show, demonstrate where we are at in the process. We're right at that little pink sunshine. We're digging right now into the engagement process. We will be working with a firm to help us do focus groups and interviews, as well as have a survey question on the priorities our community has for our food system. So, I've been saying food system a lot. When we say food system, we mean everything from growing, harvesting, processing, distributing, access, as well as waste and waste recovery. So, that is how we organize this report. We organize it through those four sections, and in each section, we talk about key findings, challenges, key data points, and then what we still want to know. So, everything in this report is a secondary data source, so that means we got it from the census, or the USDA, or other local sources. So, there's a lot more we want to know. This is not, this is a point in time, and there's a lot of other information we need to know about our food system from the people who live here. So, I think if you look at page ten, I believe, I'm just going to dive right into our Grow and Harvest section. This is a map that we have of Kent County. You can see our county, and this is a projection of our loss of farmland by 2040 with a business-as-usual situation. So, I know the county's aware of the development pressure on our farmland because there's the Farmland Preservation Committee, but the orange shows that which would be converted to low-density residential, and then the pink would be farmland converted to urban and highly developed. So, you can see if that continues past 2040, we would lose so much of our farmland that provides the food and also jobs for people in our community. So, when it comes to questions we want to know, we still want to know more about for our growing and harvesting section, we would love to know, how can Kent County track the amount of food consumed locally that's produced locally? Apparently, this is a question communities across the country are grappling with, and we would love to know also how this number can be increased. And we'd like to know, what are the opportunities to strengthen local food production in Kent County? Okay, we're going to go to the next section, Processing and Distributing. So again, a map of Kent County showing the various food processing infrastructure. So, we have a lot going on when it comes to food in our county, and you can read a little bit more on this page about what the different places are that we have. And we would like to know how we can strengthen economic and workforce development in the food processing sector in Kent County. So, food access. All of us access food hopefully every day, and we have different ways of doing that. We can go to a grocery store, we can go to a farmer's market, we can go to a food pantry. So, we took some time to figure out, how many of these sites do we have within our county? And you'll see all those numbers there. We know that people in our county are spending about eleven point seven percent of their total budget on food, and depending on income, that can be more challenging or less. So, this map shows the different access locations and retail locations in our county, and I just want to point out the yellow, as well as the pink, sections on these maps. So, the yellow and the pink sections are showing low-vehicle access, as well as low-vehicle access and low-income. So, traditionally, sometimes these are called food deserts. It's places where people can't access the good food that they need. So, we know we have a lot of places within our county that are really struggling. So, we would like to still know how many residents qualify for benefits but aren't receiving them? What is the SNAP gap in Kent County, in other words? And how can Kent County address systemic causes of food insecurity outside the network of emergency food distribution organizations? We know we have many of those, but are there other ways that we can be addressing food insecurity and food inaccess? So, our last section here is food waste and waste recovery. So, we know that estimates are that between thirty-five and forty percent of the food within our food system is wasted. So, I just want to point to the middle section here, data from Kent County, showing that seventy, about seventy-five percent of the organic waste is food waste. So, we're seeing that happen in our county here, too. And there are many different partners within our community that are working in this area, so Organic Cycle, Fulton Street Market Cleaning Program. There's a number of different businesses like Wormies, Feeding America West Michigan. They're all working on food recovery, as well as food waste solutions. So, we would like to know, where is a majority of the food waste coming from by sector in Kent County, and how can we track that? What are some of the municipal solutions to food waste recovery that can build on the existing organizational partnerships in place? And I know that this is a conversation within Kent County as well, with the biodigester. How is the charitable food system a part of food waste recovery, and how do those partners collaborate? So, we are hearing from people that there is less opportunity for food waste recovery, which can be a good thing, but how are people dealing with those challenges, and what are the solutions that we can work on together? So, like I said, that was a lot, and it actually isn't even barely getting into it. There's a lot more for you to look into, and like I said, I'd love to discuss more. But what we worked on today was just looking at the secondary data where that pink arrow is. And like I said, what we'll be working on next is gathering primary data from our community through community engagement. And we'd love your help sharing those opportunities with your constituents so that they can share with us what they see for our food system. And those things together will create the Kent County Food System Plan, which we hope to have for you next year, to share more about the recommendations that could truly create the local food system that we all need and want. So, I hope we have a few moments for questions and comments, but I would be curious, what data was surprising that I shared with you, or data that you looked at in the report? And knowing your constituents, what key findings do you think that we should ask more about? What do you think, what are questions we should ask the community when we go to them and ask them about their experience with the food system and what they would like to see for our county? So, that's it. That's my contact information. I'd be happy to speak more, but yes, definitely open to questions or comments.
Thank you so much. We'll see if any commissioners have any questions or comments they wish to raise. Commissioner Baker.
Yes, it's fantastic data, and gets me, at least, to think about this in different ways. I guess my colleague to the left here probably spends some time talking about where food comes from, too. So, I just remember that. But anyway, I think that oftentimes, like say with the parks, you know, the data does not include, say, Grand Rapids Parks. Is that, how do you account for urban areas and some of the issues? Because transportation routes in the city aren't necessarily a problem, but still, there are places that people would consider food deserts. So, you look at that data, and how do you take that into account?
So, you're asking, how do parks fit in?
No, 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 I was just using that as an example. I'm talking about, you know, how do you look at areas, the whole county, and the differences between rural areas, city areas, etc.
Yes, so I would say that, I would point to that map that we have. Let me find the page for you. Page sixteen and seventeen, those two maps are showing different access challenges people have. So, the yellow is low-vehicle access only, and then the pink is low-income and low-vehicle access. So, we didn't look at transportation routes having to do with the bus or any other forms of transportation, but these are the ones that we did look at. And these are, this is all census data.
Okay, thanks. So, I guess the other thing is, do you talk to residents to see how they get to stores?
Yes, I think that's, I think that's a really good point. I think for our community engagement, that will be, access is usually a great entry point for people. How do you get your food? How easy is it? Yeah, what are the challenges you're facing? I think that's a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstang.
Thank you, Chair Stuck. Thanks for being here today. I think the first thing that grabbed me in the report is page ten and thirteen, and how they're really connected. We would bring in new businesses, we don't blink an eye to build new infrastructure, all of that. And the infrastructure for these food service companies that create hundreds of jobs, and a lot of them are very good paying, is that their infrastructure is farmland. And if the farmland moves away, their number-one cost is transporting the goods to their plants to be processed. And it's an easy choice for them, and there's no farmland around just to close up shops. So, I'm glad you pointed out, that's one of the really big facts. So, on your take about food waste in general, I want to say the biggest factor is the trash can in front of someone's house. Have you found that, you know, you go to stores, there's a best-buy date, a used-buy date, and a sell-buy date, and all three of them have three different meanings? Do you think people are throwing away more good food than just?
Yes, I do. I think that there is widespread confusion about what those dates mean, and there needs to be better regulation about how those dates are put on there because a lot is going to waste that I think could be used otherwise. I think that there are many solutions that are being implemented on business levels that are improving what is on the shelves, but there's still many challenges. Thank you.
Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you so much for your presentation. I think this is a very important conversation for us to be having. I am wondering, I have two questions. The first question is related to urban farming, or farming that doesn't take place over large acreage spaces, and how that might fit into the conversation. I had the fortune of engaging with Square Roots down on the GFS campus a number of years ago, just to see their operation down there. It's a really cool concept. As far as I know, it hasn't scaled anywhere, but it could be a sort of an opportunity for us to think differently about that.
Yes, yeah, no, I appreciate that question. I'm just looking in our Grow-Harvest Things We Want to Know More. One of the questions we say is, what is the full picture of urban farming and communal gardening in Kent County? Where are the urban gardens and farms, and how are they managed? So, we did try to gather that data through this process and found that there is no one that's tracking that. So, we know it's happening here and there, but there's no collective entity managing it. So, there is an exciting project. WEMIAC received a grant from the USDA that is all about looking at urban farming opportunities. So, I think through that project, we'll have a bit more information to work with and more of an understanding of what is going on and what could go on.
That's great, thank you. And my second question is related to the engagement with the Rapid and the ways in which the Food Policy Council might interface with the Rapid's Transit Master Plan process, both in the past and the future.
That's a great question. So, ENTF has a Transportation Subcommittee, so they've done some of the relationship-building work. That is not something that we've looked at yet, but I would love to, and I appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair Stuck. Very nice presentation this morning, thank you for being here. I was surprised to see the timeline on that and see, you know, wow, this takes years to try to get your mind and this whole concept, you know, understood. And very supportive of the work that you're doing, and glad to see that you mentioned farmland preservation. That is one of the actions this board is looking at. And I didn't really have any questions for you, I just wanted to make a statement. No farms, no food.
That's right.
Food does not come from Meyer stores, it comes from farms.
Yes, yes, thank you.
All right, with that, Commissioner LeGrand, I believe, is next.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Janelle, very nice presentation, and you didn't even get bells rung on you. So, really good job getting through all this information quickly. I just wonder, maybe I just haven't had enough coffee this morning. Can you run through your definitions of what low-access, low-vehicle access only? Vehicle access only means these are stores you couldn't get to except with a car?
So, low-vehicle access, and I may call on my data analyst over there to help me with this, but low-vehicle access means that it's not income that's the issue with accessing food, it's that there's no vehicle, or they don't have, there's not enough vehicles in the household to use in order to get the groceries and the good food they need. So, for some folks, it's just a vehicle, it's just like they can't walk anywhere, they need to drive somewhere, and for other people, it's that they don't have enough money, and they also don't have a vehicle to get to the grocery store that they need. So, you know, I think a lot of our grocery stores are quite big and far away, so it used to be, you know, that you could maybe walk to a grocery store. That's increasingly difficult, so you kind of need a car, or you need a bus route in order to get to a grocery store, and that's not always that accessible. And I also know that some buses have restrictions for the kind of carts that you can take on the bus, so lots of challenges there.
Okay, and then at one-half and ten miles, what are those distances? What does that refer to?
Hi, Emily Madsen, data analyst with the Kent County Essential Needs Task Force. So, these are definitions in the census around, they're different for urban and rural. So, the one-half is urban, and the ten miles is rural access point. So, the idea of, are you going to be on transportation, walking, how important is a vehicle? I can follow up with the official definitions, but you could also, if you Google this, it's an official term that you'll get, the census documentation of what does this definition mean.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair, thank you for being here, thanks for your presentation. I'm wondering, do you guys do anything education-wise for the public to try to teach the public how to start their own gardens and how to do any of that? I mean, it's fairly easy to do just a couple plants on your own, and then you don't have to go to the grocery store for quite a while because you've got fresh vegetables. And I also believe that there's less waste as well because you have that personal responsibility of growing your own food, and you want to use it. Is there anything you guys do along that route?
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. I am a gardener myself, and I totally understand your point. Well, you're sitting next to Lisa Oliver King, so she could tell you a few things about that. Lisa does that. And then we also work with different partners that do more education. So, there's Hope Gardens in Wyoming, Julie's one of our council members. So, the council, we are not providing that education directly. Could we one day in the future, perhaps? But at this point, this is what we're focusing on, and definitely wanting to uplift the work that our partners are doing in that way. And hopefully, being a connecting place where people who want to learn more can come to us, and we can help connect them to those that are providing that. But, point taken, thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair, good morning. Thank you so much for that presentation. I, too, was compelled by the farmland preservation piece of this. Everything revolves around farmland, like Wally indicated. Pretend like we don't need dirt anymore, but we do. Have you guys looked at the success in Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, as a model? Because if you look at them demographically, they almost mirror Kent County. I've been out there a couple times and looked at their program. And they are absolutely thriving. Their schools are thriving, their scores are way up because people aren't fleeing the city. They have an urban growth program out there where they continue to grow. The real estate developers and the home builders love it. At first, they hated it, they fought it, but they realized that by preserving farmland, it made that area a very desirable place to live. So, they create urban growth areas, which are, sometimes, farmland isn't real desirable for whatever reasons, it's not prime. So, those are areas that set up, and they keep the infrastructure moving towards those areas so we don't have septic system popping up all over. And the people out there love it. I can't believe, and I oppose farmland preservation, the idea of paying farmers, you know, it's kind of, I just thought, well, it just didn't seem right. It didn't seem like it followed anything that I really believed in, to pay them outside of what they normally get for the land. But actually, it's cheaper to preserve farmland than it is to develop if you look at the, you know, and all the assets that come along with that because sitting on prime farmland is like sitting over oil. It's the same type of thing. It's so valuable, and why would we pave it over? So, I would just encourage you to take a look at Lancaster, PA. It's the number-one farmland preservation program in the country, and everybody at this point's bought into it because they see the success. And if anybody has never been out there, if you ever get a chance to, it's just absolutely incredible. So, I appreciate you guys keeping an eye on that and getting the word out that the farmland preservation loss here in Kent County is going to continue unless we tap the brakes and figure out a different plan.
Yeah, right, thank you, I appreciate that comment. Yeah, and once we develop farmland, there's no going back. You know, it's not something that we can restore. So, I think I will definitely look into Lancaster.
And to that point, Detroit right now is trying to go back. And they are, and they're literally trying to build those old neighborhoods, but it's not working. They want to revert back to farmland, and it's just not feasible. And they're making every effort to do it, but it's just not working, so.
Yes, appreciate that, thank you.
Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I was struck by the numbers on page fifteen. A hundred and twenty-eight grocery stores and ninety-four beer, wine, and liquor stores. And so, I would be very curious to see how those grocery stores are spread out, where they're spread out, compared to those beer, liquor, and wine stores. So, that was just, I suppose, a point that I wanted to bring out. But the only question that I had for you is, you mentioned that you're going to have some recommendations next year.
Yes.
Do you have an idea of when next year that would be?
See if I can go back to my timeline here. So, I think, we're thinking like June, July, and hopefully by August, we should have something. So, through next March, we'll be doing community engagement, focus groups, interviews. We'll come back to the community through two or three forums. We'll take all that data, our New Venture Advisors, our consulting firm, will help us identify what are the policy recommendations within that, how can we connect? Then we go through the process of developing a report like this, so it's easy to digest. So, yes, hopefully, early fall next year.
Okay, thank you. And is there, I suppose, a focus or data that you can access or share with us specifically? Because a grocery store can be a grocery store, right? If it's completely filled with not-organic food, or a bunch of, I forget the term is, but you know what I'm talking about. That doesn't necessarily help the population as well. So, is there data or info that you can share with us as far, or maybe it's already?
You know what, no, I'm really glad you mentioned that. So, one of our council members is named Bree Bodie, and she coordinates a project called the Great Grocer Project. And what it does is it goes into grocery stores and identify key elements of what is a great grocer, and it's a grocer that has access to good food for people, and not just, you know, food that is very easy to sell. So, you know, convenience snacks. So, Bree is working on a policy brief, as well as, she will have some sort of overview of her data for Kent County. She already has it for Grand Rapids, but she's expanding to Kent County, and I hope that can be incorporated into the plan that we share with you next year.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Hennessy.
My question, thank you, Janelle.
Hi, Karen.
My question is similar to Commissioner Diaz in terms of just, you know, you still indicate that there's a lot of compiling of information and next steps in terms of getting the data.
Yeah.
And, which is really how you're going to be approaching that and getting to that, to where there actually is an action plan, and how you, you know, and if you might be involving commissioners along the way in this.
Yes, thank you for asking that question. Yes, so, we're really lucky to be working with Public Agency, which is a firm of WIMCAT, and they'll be coordinating the focus groups and interviews and forums with us, and we'll be working with them on developing the questions. We do have a stakeholder advisory committee, which has a number of commissioners that sit on that, and we hope that you can help continue to advise us on how we can make this plan workable and doable for Kent County. We're also hoping that this can be adopted by the City of Grand Rapids as well, so we have some City of Grand Rapids commissioners with us as well. We know that food isn't just the purview of the county or the city. We know that townships, villages are involved, we know the state is involved, we know federal policy is at stake, but we want to make sure that it is very realistic for the county. So, certainly, there will be opportunities for that committee to be involved. And then, we're really lucky to be working with this consulting firm because they've done this exact same process in many different places. So, we were attracted to work with them because of a report and a plan that they developed for Douglas County in Kansas City, Missouri. So, you know, we're really looking at what other people around the country are doing and trying to find ways of connecting what we find to opportunities. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? I don't see any hands. So, again, thank you, Janelle, for your report.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Thank you for all the work and the council's work.
Thank you.
And we look forward to hearing updates later. All right. Next item of business is public comment. If there is anyone here from the public that wishes to address the Board of Commissioners, this opportunity is to address on items that are on the agenda only. There is another opportunity later in the meeting if you have a general jurisdiction issue. If you do have an item on the agenda you wish to address, please identify yourself and provide us your address, and you have up to three minutes.
Good morning, Chairman Steck.
Good morning.
Commissioners and staff. Again, my name is Daniel Scott, longtime resident of Kent County. Live on the west side here. And again, my real identity is I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. On August 25th, the U.S. Department of Health, and I'm going to be addressing B and C under resolutions. On August 25th, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services announced that $23 million of our taxpayers' dollars will be allocated to preventing teen pregnancy. Among the organizations receiving funding are Planned Parenthood League of Massachusetts, where young girls over 16 do not need parental consent for a baby to be murdered in their womb. Among the disbursement of funds, $1 million has been granted to Planned Parenthood and will be used to reach out to high school students. The announcement states, quote, "These awards reflect the Biden-Harris administration's commitment to both sexual and reproductive health and to prioritizing health equity." The Biden-Harris administration has been a staunch supporter of unregulated murders, and appears they are now targeting minors. So, as you consider allocating funds to the Health Department of Kent County, and I see that a lot of these resolutions have to do with that, again, I would appeal to you. Please do not use these funds, first of all, to give to Planned Parenthood, or Planned Genocide, as I call it, because they are now in the business of gender mutilation and castration. And I would hope that none of these funds would be allocated for the murder of children in the womb and now out of the womb. I would appeal to you, and on the basis of Holy Scripture, say, if you approve of any money going to that organization or any other organization that murders babies, according to Scripture, you're an accomplice to murder. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll move to the next item, which is our consent agenda. And I will call upon Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move our consent agenda for the day.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Baker. Questions, comments? All right. If not, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Green, Antor, Merchant, DeBoer, Hildenbrand, Ponstein, Burl, Coleman, Vice Chair Brevi, Commissioners Teal, Sparks, McCloud, Hennessy, Oliver King, LaGrand, Baker, Woodin, Pakla, Diaz, Boojak, Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 21 nays, yays, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to the resolutions that are before us today and start with 8A and call on Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move Resolution 104 of today's date to accept and appropriate grant funds from the Office of Global Michigan Refuse Services through their grant program. It comes to us from the Health Department.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments? I see none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 104, Commissioners Green, Antor, Merchant, DeBoer, Hildenbrand, Ponstein, Burl, Coleman, Vice Chair Brevi, Commissioners Teal, Sparks, McCloud, Hennessy, Oliver King, LaGrand, Baker, Woodin.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz. Boojak.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 21 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 104 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to item 8B, and I will call on Commissioner McCloud.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 105, the Michigan Health Endowment Fund Health Equity Capacity Building Grant, coming to us from the Health Department.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions or comments on this motion? Commissioner Coleman.
Sorry, Chair, did I just say my name?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. So, just as a moment of comparison of Resolution 105, just on the table here, and 106, 106, I can understand, you know, to transform inequitable environments with populations that are at high risk for chronic disease due to lack of access to healthy foods and physical activity. Like, specific, I kind of understand what that is. The resolution currently before us feels to me like the worst of a, you know, government bureaucracy speak that says nothing, at least to me. So, to support community-based and community-led work that creates a sustainable foundation for cross-sectoral collaboration and coordination to address key health issues. Honestly, I have no idea what that is. It could be good, could be bad, I don't know. But reading further, it's just a continuation of lots of words that, to me, don't sound very specific. So, I'll be voting against it.
All right. Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. This resolution was debated in Finance Committee. And, you know, one of the key things I think is lost as you read it, that I think is pertinent, is, you know, the grant funds are to partner with local organizations to determine the right course of action to improve health equity outcomes in those areas. Because as my colleague would know very full well, and this is something he and I share, government bureaucrats don't always have the best idea of how to improve outcomes in a specific community, because they're not from that community. And the capacity building grant that we're accepting will allow our health experts to work with local experts, particularly within the Roosevelt Park Neighborhood Association, one of the most robust and high-performing NAs in the city of Grand Rapids, focusing in an area that has historically been overlooked, that have historic health inequities throughout that, throughout that neighborhood and that those census tracts. And I would not suppose that our department, our experts in knowing how to deliver those services, how to build systems and build programmings to change outcomes, but I do know them to have the health expertise that when matched with local expertise can move the dial. And that's what this grant is going to provide. So, I think that hopefully that provides a little more context to my colleague, and why I will be voting for it.
Thank you for addressing that to me. I saw that. Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Diaz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't read this resolution, honestly, until just now. So, I just now realized that it's for the Roosevelt Park Neighborhood. And being the commissioner from that neighborhood, I definitely agree that the language here specifically for diabetes and cardiovascular disease is rampant in our neighborhoods. And so, I definitely would like to get more details in the future from the Health Department on how that work went. But I'm definitely proud to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein, did you have your hand up as well? Okay. Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I ask for Director London to?
You may. In fact, I was going to ask Director Adam London from the Health Department, or anyone from his staff. I know Commissioner Coleman didn't ask a question per se, but it kind of was a question. So, if you can respond to any of that, that would be great.
Absolutely. And good morning, everyone. And I sympathize with the commentary about the verbiage of the action request, which in many cases is taking the language from the grant award itself and moving that forward, which in this case can be somewhat confusing. I agree. I do have with me Brian Hartle this morning, who oversees the program and can talk about what it is proposing to do in more detail.
Yeah. Good morning. I want to make sure that we're reading the right one, because I think C on the agenda is about Roosevelt Park Neighborhood. This one is about the Health Equity Council and the Health Endowment Fund. So, I just want to clarify that. I know there's talk of Roosevelt Park. That is more focused on the next item on the agenda. So, this one with the governmental speak in it is really about listening to the voice of our communities. And Commissioner Woodin talked about that. We want to ensure that community residents are engaged in letting us know what they need for their populations to ensure their health. And you've heard about the Community Health Needs Assessment. That's a big part of this, is listening to the folks that live in Kent County, hearing their concerns, hearing their needs, helping them to be part of the process that allows them to prioritize our health issues and come up with strategies against those issues. And if you know about the process, all the health systems in Kent County have to be involved in this. It's part of their nonprofit status. And so, a lot of times what happens is all the health systems go off and make their own community health improvement plans that they, you know, address for the populations and the patients that they serve. So, part of this, with the streamlining issues, streamlining systems, is all about that. A lot of times, we're not coordinated in those efforts, and we want to bring this, or build capacity to align systems to ensure that we're taking a collective impact approach for our communities, ensuring that we're pulling it in the right direction altogether. And so, that's the main issue with this, is just we're trying to bring people together. And you understand governments, you know, sometimes work differently, and maybe don't work in a coordinated manner. Same thing with health systems. And so, that's the main goal of this, is to streamline that and coordinate that in a better, in a better way.
Commissioner DeBoer, do you have a question as well, or a follow-up?
I do have a follow-up. So, is this grant then specifically for that, for that long-term goal of bringing them all together? It's just an assessment, and it's just a plan? Is that correct?
It's a piece of it. I mean, there's multiple avenues of funding that we receive for this work. This is just one of them. And the main target of this funding is really to provide compensation to community members to be part of that process. And so, we applied for this funding through the Health Endowment Fund to allow for community members to be compensated. We have several community members who represent different geographic locations in Kent County, different racial and ethnic populations in Kent County. So, we want to make sure that they're compensated for their voice and bringing that to the table. So, some of this funding will go to that. Some of this funding will go to mini-grants that provide community-based organizations to address the issues that have been raised in the Community Health Needs Assessment process, and really bringing that money to those organizations who really have that front-facing interaction with the populations that they serve.
All right. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm going to be voting against it, not because I think there's something going on here, but I just think it's a matter of understanding. I've seen several federal bills that have been passed recently famously, where representatives, as they were passing it, were asked what's in it. And they said, well, we'll find out afterwards. And I, obviously, this isn't on that scale, but I'm not real clear necessarily either. And I think I'm going to be voting against. I'm sure it's going to pass, but I don't understand. It seems a little word-sality to me. And because I don't understand, I'll be voting against it.
Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for being here this morning. A question for you. One of the things that the grant is going to do is to help decrease the duplication of services. Maybe it will be more helpful if you tell us what those services would be?
Sure. I mean, it's not really defined yet what those services are, because we have to listen to the voice of the community, obviously. Community Health Needs Assessment process is done every three years. We identify different priorities during those processes. So, the last Health Needs Assessment identified mental health. It identified economic security, identified access to care, and discrimination and racial inequity. So, in 2020, those were the priorities that came about from the Community Health Needs Assessment. The Health Equity Council also reinforced the need to address mental health services and support in Kent County. So, that's one of them, you know. But the next round of the CHNA could bring up different priorities. But currently, the Health Equity Council and the Community Health Needs Assessment, one of their priorities is mental health. And so, in this past round, we were able to fund 15 different organizations to address mental health services and also community safety. Community safety is a big part of mental health. And so, that's one of them. And so, they were able to use the funding to address the needs of their community in the way that they saw appropriate. And so, you know, we talk about it. We make sure that there's not duplication of services, but we do know that they're still out there. So, Corwell, Mercy, or Trinity, U of M Health West, all have their separate community health improvement plans. And so, there is potential for there to be overlap in those services. And what we want to do is make sure that we're working together in a better way to address the needs of the population.
And if I could just add to that real quickly, we're in the process of entering this next cycle of need assessing, and the process of community health improvement planning will follow that when the identities, where the priorities have been identified. And that's where we have, you know, these three large healthcare systems who all be developing their own community health improvement plans to address those priorities. Sometimes, you know, they're very competitive. Sometimes, they don't communicate well between themselves. And that's where, in the past, I've often said to my team, we can be a little bit like Switzerland. We can kind of be a neutral ground here, where we can help to foster these conversations and make sure there's not a duplication of services, and everyone's resources are used more efficiently. And as an example of that, this sort of philosophy is kind of what helped us a few years ago bring everyone together to plan for the Crisis Center. And we see the kind of, you know, neutral space the county was able to provide in that, that helped to move those conversations along. So, we're hoping, as new priorities are identified, to be able to do that kind of work on those parties as well.
Great answer. Thank you so much.
Commissioner LaGrand.
Thank you, Chair. I've had the privilege of meeting with the Health Equity Council and seeing members of our Health Department at work there, representatives from our sheriff's office, who did a fantastic job. And it seems to me that it might be a good idea for the commissioners to know that this Community Health Needs Assessment is not something the Health Department dreamed up. This is actually a requirement. Can you explain that, Adam? Just so that this is, this is not some little program we dreamed up. This is a very important thing that we are required to go through.
Right. Federal law actually requires a Community Health Needs Assessment be performed by nonprofit healthcare systems. We have actually five of them in this community that qualify for that requirement. And for about a decade now, we've actually been coordinating that process so that we don't have five separate surveys and projects happening simultaneously. And so, we've been able to really, I think, be a multiplier of the resources available to us to make one process for our community, and then everyone in those systems has buy-in to that one process. Now, on the backside of that, the health improvement planning and that coordination is still where there's work to be done, and that's part of what this is about. Each of those systems is also required to set aside some of their revenue to fund those priorities. It's called their community benefit dollars. And so, this is part of that coordination to make sure that they're using that money as effectively and efficiently as possible, and not duplicating projects and ideas and services.
Thank you. If I just can have one follow-up comment. This does really reflect a lot of attempt at efficiency, at good communication, at good use of resources, and finding, what I learned from Administrator Vanderberg, is OPM, or other people's money, instead of using Health Department dollars to do this good work is really wonderful, and I commend you. I'm glad these dollars are available to help this effort. I think, having been there, having been in the room, having, I mean, and a lot of people show up for this, it's really wonderful to see how well the communication went. And just to be on the ground as part of this assessment carries out is, was a privilege for me. And I thank you for this work and for being here to help explain it to everyone.
And this intentionally brings the community voice to that process, and not just executives of healthcare systems and people like us that have, you know, influence and some power here.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you, Chair.
Yes. Anyone else? Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Steck. So, Adam, thanks for being here. So, my comments is not an attack on the Health Department, but Commissioner Coleman, I think, hit it right on the head. This is wide open with no specifics to it. And I am always fearful of the federal and state government now, where we talk about equity in healthcare, yeah, I'm all for it. for it, you know? Making sure get, people get doctor's appointments, have the access to, you know, medication if they need it. But what I'm fearful is, is both the federal and the state government now consider abortion as a healthcare alternative. And that's something that, if it's not ruled out in this and it's still part of this grant scheme, I cannot support anything like this. So, thanks.
All right. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Coleman, that would be your second, right? So, anyone else for the first? Commissioner Wood? I give a first chance before we give a second chance, all right?
Well, I did technically speak already. I just wanted to apologize for the confusion.
I'll get back to you. Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. So I would echo that we did have quite a bit of conversation about this one and finance. And those that are not on finance wouldn't have heard that conversation, obviously. But I think that the part of this, this grant that is most beneficial from my perspective is that it's intentionally including the voices of the communities that are impacted by the policies and the things that, you know, that give way to the disparate healthcare outcomes, right? And so, I think that one of the main questions I had was there's this huge amount in contractual. What is that gonna be used for, right? And so, understanding that we are valuing the time of the community members and their expertise to know what they need in their community, so we're valuing their time by providing them compensation for what would otherwise be uncompensated work. I think that that's super important and, and understanding that that's what the majority of these dollars are gonna be used for, is to ensure that the communities that are impacted by these, by the decisions of, you know, the, the healthcare partners that are providing the service in their area, that they get to say, "This is what we need to be able to correct the things that are causing us to have disparate health outcomes." And so, that is something that they rarely get asked for, their input to these decisions that are gonna craft the way that they are provided these services. And I think that what I got from that, and again, I have lots of questions in, in committee, because it's, it's important when all of the money's buried in a category that is not specifically identified, what are you gonna do with those dollars? And when I heard that, I said, "Wow, this is good. We are valuing community input. We are making sure that they are the ones driving what is, what, you know, is gonna end up in those plans." And so, I would just encourage the commissioners to look at the minutes from the Finance Committee and to, to look at kind of some of those questions that were asked and how, how they were answered, because that did provide me with much clarity that these dollars are not just in the universe and gonna be used for someone's salary. They are gonna be used and put to good use in, in the community, in the communities that are specifically impacted. So, thank you for the work that's going into this. I love that there's some coordination happening from this, and I think that this is what we actually need to be doing all the time, because many times these dollars are just going out there and everybody's doing their own thing, but nobody's talking to each other. So that's really important, and I'm glad that we're moving forward with this work.
All right. I think we're to the second round. So Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. So I, I missed finance last week, traveling for my day job, so thank you for, you know, having this conversation here. It's, it's very, very helpful to me. So I, I think if I'd seen the, you know, resolution and it had, you know, specifics in, like, there'll be, you know, eight meetings over the course of six months with between, you know, 200 and 250 people, you know, and the outcome is, you know, a shared, you know, strategy, you know, that, then I wouldn't have kind of batted an eye at it if it was kind of more specific. So I guess to just help me as I'm, you know, tottering between, you know, yes and no here, like, what did this look like last year in terms of those specifics? Like, how many meetings occurred? Like, what, what were the outcomes of those? What did it look like in, in last year's version of this?
Yeah, that's a great question. I appreciate that. So, last year, you know, we kind of front-loaded our meetings. We have different groups in this council. We have a Community Voice Group, which represents those members of the community, Commissioner McLeod left, that are compensated for their work. So they come together and they went through a process to identify, you know, needs in their community, prioritize those needs, and they came up with that mental health and community safety. And so, then they moved towards action teams. And so, that was the kind of the next step, to form action teams around three objectives around the mental health piece. And so, we typically would have about two meetings per month where the Community Voice Group came together over the course of, of the last year. We started in October. And then every quarter, we have systems, partners, groups that come together. And Commissioner LaGranne, that's where she came to. And so, that brings together the health system partners, educational partners, other funders, other community-based organizations. So we bring those, those folks together to really try to help to coordinate that, understand and listen, you know, to the community members and what they've come up with in terms of their needs, and then identify ways that we can work together as a system, as a public health system, to address those needs. And so, so I would say, just to recap, about two meetings per month with a Community Voice Group and action teams, and then quarterly meetings of that systems-level meeting.
All right. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. But what I just said previously, I just wanted to apologize for the confusion from earlier. I clearly should have finished my cup of coffee, realizing we were on the wrong resolution. That's on me. But I do think, as Mr. Harte mentioned, you know, the, the value of matching health experts with local experts is, is also in this grant and a valuable investment. So, thank you.
All right. I think Commissioner Diaz for a second?
Yes. Likewise, I, my apologies if I mistaken on the resolution, but I had two specific questions. I don't know if they're something you can address now or once this assessment is done, specifically as it relates to, one, medical debt for people in our community, and, two, people who tend to not access services for fear of, people who say are under-documented and don't access medical services for fear of having to provide identification services. So, I don't know if that's something that you, that is typically taken into account when these assessments are done. But if not, I'm hoping that we can see if it can be included this, this round. Do we know, I guess my main question is, do you know when we would have the results back on, on this?
So our, our current Community Health Needs Assessment is underway right now. So we are doing a community survey, which just kicked off last week, and it is open through the end of October. So, the information is out and about. We can share that with the, with the commission here. You can share it with your constituents, and hopefully they can take that. It's an online survey. We also can provide paper copies, if that's an easier way to get information out there. We also have contracted with about 10 different community-based organizations to engage their populations in, in doing the survey. But that's what we really need to hear. I mean, that's what we talk about, the community voice and lending their voice to solutions, to health issues. And so, so that's what we want to hear. And so, like I mentioned last time, economic, economic security came up, and so, you know, childcare came up, access to services came up. So we, we address those through strategies, but, you know, not everyone are we able to address. So medical debt and a fear of, you know, coming to the doctor are things that haven't been included in our strategies. But, you know, again, if they come up, then, then we'll find ways to do that.
Thank you. And I just want to close with the point that you made. Maybe somebody wouldn't think of childcare being an aspect of health, but it very much, very much is. So, thank you for that.
And I want to make sure that everyone here has that, that survey link, and please share that with your constituents. The results of that do drive the priorities of ourself and of the healthcare systems with those community benefit dollars over the course of the next three years. So very important. We get lots of feedback.
All right. Commissioner Antor for a second?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say that this, the idea of letting the affected areas have more say in how this money spends, obviously, it's a great idea, and I wish we could kind of allow communities that receive the Community Development Block Grant money that same ability, because they, they seem to get pigeonholed on how they can spend it, as opposed to spending it how they'd like to. So I'd like to see that translate over in that area. It's not gonna happen, but wishlist. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to share, as an org, as an individual who runs an organization that has participated in this process, in terms of reaching out to our constituents to be involved, just reiterate the point of this is a community-driven process. Community decides the issues, community decides the process, and we, as those experts in the area, we follow what community wants from us. Money is not going out there like, "Hey, let's get you paid so that you can go buy bomb-bombs or whatever." It is truly community-driven. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Sparks?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question. When will the survey go out and what is the timeframe for getting that information back to you?
So, yeah, so as I mentioned, the, the survey went live last week. I think it was last Friday, maybe. It's open through October 31st. And after that, we'll collect information. So we've done, this is one step of the process. So we've done a telephone-based survey called the Behavior Risk Factors Survey. We've done a collective impact assessment, which went out to organizations to understand what they do and how they're involved in the system. We've done several focus groups to fill some of the gaps in our survey data. Again, we contracted with several community-based organizations to, to listen to their, their populations. And then, in November, we have two prioritization sessions, November 9th and November 14th, I believe, where we'll kind of bring the data to the population. We want to engage everyone in our community to, to be a part of those prioritization sessions. And that's where they review the data, take a look at it, understand it, and then really identify what the priorities from their perspective are that we should move forward with in the Community Health Improvement Plan.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. So my initial concern with some of this is just the engagement of some of the more controversial culture issues that are around right now. And so, can you just speak to some of that as far as how much engagement are you giving into some of these health issues that are a little bit more controversial? Did you understand my question?
I think so.
Brian? Can you be more specific about the controversial issues?
Well, like, what type of health issues are we? I mean, it's community-driven, but like, what, how far are we engaging in as far as what the community decides is a health issue? I mean, is, you know, gender-changing surgeries, you know, all of that kind of, do you engage in that sector, or is that something that we steer away from?
I'll just give you an example. I mean, based upon our last Community Health Needs Assessment, the priorities came about economic security, mental health, access to care, and racial and discrimination and racial inequities. That came out during our last Community Health Needs Assessment. So I haven't, I don't think things get that specific in the Health Needs Assessment. However, as we mentioned, this is community-driven. So if that comes out as something that the community wants to address, then, then we'll take a look at it and see what we can do or what we should do about it. But I, I feel like the bigger topics of mental health, community safety that came, came out of the Health Equity Council, those are usually what comes out of this. We had healthy eating and active living come out of one of them, too. So they're pretty standard, and then larger, larger health issues that we try to drill down, but I, I can't predict it, but that's, I get to speak to the past.
And we'd be happy to share the, the most recent survey results with, with all of you, so you got an idea of what kind of issues and things are coming to the service. If that's helpful.
All right. Now, I just have a couple. So, Adam, am I correct that, is it every three years that as a community, we engage in this Community Health Needs Assessment process? And in part, because it's, it's not just fun to do, but it's required?
That's exactly right.
That we engage in that process? And that's a process of reaching out into the community, lots of conversations, a lot of studies, a lot of feedback, to accumulate what does this community identify as being their key priorities and their needs when it comes to healthcare?
Exactly right.
If we accept this grant, it would cover a small part of the cost of a small part of that overall process.
That's exactly right. Yes.
If not, we either don't get that as part of this process, or we have to cover it elsewhere.
It would compromise the quality of our final report if we did not have access to the community voice portion of it.
And this is a report that you generate every three years. I've seen them. They're extremely thorough. They're very valuable. I'd certainly encourage my colleagues, if you haven't looked at this, it's, it's very useful for policymakers to read through this assessment. Thank you. Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, this is a voice vote. So, all those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, say no.
No.
I rule that the yeses have it and that the motion is approved. All right. We'll move to next item 8C, and I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. I move that Resolution 106, today's date, Michigan Health Endowment Fund, P3, Parks, People Produce Grant, which comes from, which comes to us from the Health Department.
Thank you. Is there support?
Supported.
Supported by Vice Chair Breevy? Questions or comments? All right. I see none on this one, so we'll move on. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 106, Commissioners Green?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Merchant?
Yes.
DeBoer?
Yes.
Hildenbrand?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Burl?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy?
Yes.
Commissioners Teal?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
McLeod?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Oliver King?
Yes.
LaGrande?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Wooden?
Yes.
Pakla?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Boujack?
Yes.
Chair Steck?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 21 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 106 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to item 8D on the agenda, and I'll call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair Steck. It is my pleasure to move adoption of Resolution 107, up to today's date, a resolution to appropriate an additional $400,000 in 911 surcharge revenues to the 2023 Central Dispatch Collection Fund budget. It comes to us from, sorry, fiscal, from the administrators, or from, yeah, fiscal services. Sorry.
All right. Is there support for that motion? Supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Questions or comments? Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Steck. So Al, when we started collecting this surcharge for 911, what, what were our expectations then and where are we today? Are we getting the money we thought, getting more than we thought? And is there enough coming in to do everything we want? And what happens when we get everything we want and this money's still coming in?
I have no idea what our original expectations were. Is there someone in the room, fiscal, who may have that information or counsel? But we can do that research and let you know for sure.
Our sheriff, Michelle Joy Young stepping to the podium to take that one.
Good morning. I'm on the 911 dispatch authority, so I can just speak a little bit. Yes, it is tracking, pretty much in line with what we expected. There was a fair amount of research about what that might collect. Obviously, as population continues to grow, it very modestly increments up because it's based on cell phone surcharge. So the number of cell phones that are in our area will cause that increase. In terms of what it's paid for compared to what we expected it to pay for, I'll just a bit of education, because many of you guys were not on the board when this was originally moved forward, which was back in 2009, 2010 arena. It's where we consolidated dispatch centers. So the first surcharge was intended to pay for call-taking, which would be somebody dials 911. Kent County. It also had the end effect of consolidating 911 call-taking to two centers, First Grand Rapids and Kent County. Kent County does all communities besides Grand Rapids, and Grand Rapids dispatches for their own community. So that was the first surcharge. And then there was an initiative that was brought several years later to allow for funding of fire dispatch and then also a combined radio system. That radio system, we've talked about a few different times, and we're actually in the process of adding to it now to facilitate schools. But that radio system was implemented, it's fully operational, and it's shared by all first responders in Kent County. And that has, that was done on a bond. That bond payment is being made as scheduled. There are proceeds from the 911 surcharge that are being reserved to continue to pay that bond, and that it also facilitated the function of fire dispatch specifically. So that being said, surcharge does not increment up individually, that, you know, there's no inflation built into a surcharge. So the only increase we receive is when there are new users on the system. Obviously, with new users, there's also new costs, right? Because it's a people business, so I would expect that at some point, we'll have to reconsider if it's enough for our community. May I answer your question?
Yeah, I think part of the question may have been, the collection of the surcharge is subject to the good faith of the providers to report, and there's been conversation about whether we believe we're getting a full reporting on that. What's our current thinking? Is there a?
Yes. I believe we are getting our current allocation. We've done a fair amount of work to establish that there's a foundation behind the money we're receiving from each of the organizations.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, question, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. And actually, your question to the Sheriff is kind of along the same. My perennial question is how we do in our collections. And I know right now we're talking about new users and how do we establish new users. We're still taking their word for it, and I'm hoping that, Lynda, I know you've been on this trying to keep track of how this collection process works, to see if we can somehow verify as best we can that the number of new users are the actual number of new users.
I think because providers are not required to disclose their users, their consumers, customers. We do require some good faith reporting on their part. I think we're making educated judgments about whether or not it's a complete report.
That's accurate. The state law does not allow us to demand an audit from the actual carriers. So I know that Fiscal Services tracks the numbers year over year to see if they're going in a reasonable, predictable trend. But Jeff has all those numbers in Fiscal, and right now, he hasn't informed me, and we don't have any reason to think that we're missing a, you know, a whole user. We're getting money from all the known users as far as we can tell.
I always like the verbiage, trust but verify as best we can. And I realize we're a little bit, you know, limited.
Unfortunately, Lansing doesn't give us the option to actually verify.
Squeaky wheel, though. We'll just keep asking. Thank you.
There is a list of all carriers that are provided by the state, so there is that level of verification, so.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this motion? All right, if not, this is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, say no. It is approved. Move to item 8E, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 108, up to today's date, the West Michigan Welcome Plan Annual Global Gathering Event, from the Administrator's Office.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Coleman. Questions or comments on this one? I see none. This is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, say no. It is approved. All right, we'll move now to item 8F, and I will call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 109, the State of Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity Regional Collaboration Grant, coming to us from the Administrator's Office.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments? I see none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 109, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 21 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 109er is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to the last of our resolutions, 8G, and I will call on Commissioner Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the adoption of Resolution 110, at today's date, which is amendment to the standing rules. And also, put it before us, I know there's been talk about some amendments, and we can get into that discussion.
Let's get the motion up, and then we'll see what we have. Is there support for the motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Coleman. All right, any questions or comments on this motion? Commissioner Coleman.
Just a quick comment. I know that the members of the Standing Rules Subcommittee and staff put a lot of work into all of this, and it's maybe not the most exciting or entertaining work. I'm sure you might have thought you'd rather be at an esports tournament, but I just want to say thanks to all of those who did the heavy lifting to get us to this point.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So, yeah, thanks for the time and effort that everyone put into it. I guess I'm not really in a good position for the people that I represent when I get this final copy. I appreciate Regina doing at least a red line so I could kind of summarize it, but still, I mean, this is going to be one where I'm going to have to trust the people that did it. I can't really verify or ask questions on a document that I didn't see for the first time until, you know, this morning. So I'm not going to be not voting no, but there's got to be, I mean, everyone's life's busy. Mine's busy too, and I've got a job shift that's a lot different than the folks around this table. So if we're going to expect the Commissioners to be prepared at meetings, these documents, they can't even be the day before. I mean, it should be provided a good week so we can ask questions, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Hennessy?
I agree with Commissioner Ponstein's comments here in that we received the final information, you know, last evening, and it gives it, you know, not much time to consider it, and there is a certain amount of trust we'll be putting into it. But the one thing that strikes me right off the bat on this is that we're moving to quickly adopt changes to the standing rules, although it's in keeping with earlier decisions of the year. But we're going to adopt rules that would be effective on January 1st, 2025, or 25. And that's like, wait, we're hurrying up and doing this for 2025? I would, you know, since there hasn't been much discussion, I would like to amend this, that these, that Rule 1.0 be changed, so that these rules will be effective on January 1st, 2024. And I would suggest that change in that it would give us a full year to work with them to see how they work, how they don't work, before we start moving into making a decision for a year out for 2025. So I do have copies here to provide to the Chair on what the amendment would be, and it would simply be, these rules will be effective on January 1st, 2024, with the, that's the main change, changing the year. And it would be so that we would have a chance to see how they work before we get into what will be major changes in 2025.
All right, so I have, I'll take that as a motion to amend the motion before the Board to amend Rule 1 to go from January 1, 2025 effective date to January 1, 2024.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, there was support for that motion?
Yes, sir.
Support by Commissioner Sparks. All right, discussion on the motion to amend. Yes, Commissioner Hildebrand.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So the Rules Committee met yesterday morning and kind of finalized this, and I agree with, you know, Commissioner Ponstein, Commissioner Hennessy on, for those that aren't on the committee, you know, we worked yesterday morning, we tried to quickly get information out, get feedback, but of course, people are busy, and it's hard to get ahold of people and ask them to take the time to understand everything that's going on with this process over the last six months. So one thing that I did hear back from a number of Commissioners is to maybe end the standing rules. I don't want to sound like the federal government and do a, you know, continuing resolution, but I think it would make sense to have a little bit more time. And so if we can amend the rules by saying, you know, give us another four to six weeks, maybe by November 15th, we can get with our colleagues, make sure they understand what we're doing, the implications of that, make sure they're comfortable, and that's when we can consider potential changes like an effective date with Commissioner Hennessy's amendment. So I guess what I'm saying is, I don't support Commissioner Hennessy's amendment, but what I would support is another four to six weeks for us to flush this out. I think we're very close. I think the problem is, this came together yesterday morning, and people just aren't comfortable with it yet. And if we have some time to allow Commissioners to better understand this, answer questions, and then we can bring it before the Board. I also do have an amendment to make one minor change on the size of the standing committees. I know I have that. It was in one version at one point. I missed it yesterday morning at the Rules Committee, but I can explain that when the time's right. I know we have another motion before us, but I'd like to talk about that motion at some point.
Let me see if I can parse that out a little bit.
Yeah, that was a lot.
You responded to the motion to amend. I think you made a motion to table to a date certain in November?
Not table, I would actually amend the proposed rules before us to allow us to take another look at it and see if we want to make additional changes in an upcoming meeting in November.
So then that would be a motion to amend the current rules, which require this to be done by October of 2023, a couple of days from now. So that's what you are doing, but I'm going to rule that out of order right now because I have a motion to amend the underlying motion, which has to be addressed. Then, once that's addressed, then if you wish to make a motion.
Right, and I didn't put a formal motion before us. I was explaining why I'm opposing Commissioner Hennessy's amendment, because I have another idea of how we can kind of address, I think, a multitude of concerns by Commissioners.
Got it. All right. Discussions on the motion to amend. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. You know, specifically to the motion to amend, I'm going to be voting in favor of this. I personally supported the idea of having our effective date in 2024 in committee. You know, it was not something I criticized, or the effective date in the draft was not enough for me to see it as a huge objection, but I do think it's a valuable idea to allow us to try the three-committee setup for a whole year before the beginning of the new term. And, you know, while these rules certainly do hold over into the next term, this is rare that we're paying, enacting a pretty significant change that wouldn't take effect until next term. So it's for that reason that I'll be voting for the amendment. Do appreciate, you know, on a broader note, I do appreciate the work that's been put in by this committee, by members Hildebrand, Steck, Green, and McLeod. I do think we're, while there's certainly aspects of this standing rules change that I'm less a fan of, I do think we're, we've put in a significant amount of effort to create something that can solicit broad board consensus, and why I'll be voting for the amendment, because I do think it'll help us illustrate how that consensus plays out in a solid year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now Commissioner LeGrand.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to say I completely agree with Commissioner Hildebrand on the idea that we deserve a little more time. This is a big change in our committee structures, and it's very interesting, and it's intriguing, and I think a few more weeks would be helpful if there is a deadline imposed by our current standing rules that needs to be changed. I think it makes sense to do that. I think that can be considered separately from the start date, but to have to approve something right now and then move to start it immediately seems a little much if we don't completely understand and are feeling a little frustrated by maybe not having a good understanding of what the new committee structure would look like before we consider when we would start it, if I made any sense.
Thank you. I believe Commissioner Green is next.
Thank you, Chair Steck, and I will speak to Commissioner Hildebrand's suggestion when we discuss that item, when it's formally made. You know, regarding the timeline, I have supported the January 1st of 2025 timeline. I think it's critical that we stick to that. I understand the eagerness to, from some of the folks around the dais to move forward sooner than that, but I'm hearing words like try it out, experiment, see how it goes. I mean, we are the highest policymaking authority in this county, and I don't think this room is a place where we should try things out before we've vetted them and do that kind of thing. So I just, I think that would be irresponsible. I think it makes a lot more sense when we've expanded. The state law has expanded terms to last for four years, that we don't start it in the middle of a two-year term, the final two-year term that anybody at a county in Michigan will ever serve. We started at the beginning of a four-year term with the new structure. And the learning that we're going to do will happen in the next calendar year by the staff, by the Commissioners, as we have time then, when we have a proven structure that we've operated under probably before I was a gleam in my mother's eye, that we can work through that and find the ways that we can improve upon it, think about it for the course of that year. I'm not in favor of trying things out when it comes to the proceedings of this body, so thank you.
All right. Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. I don't know if, per our rules, I can ask through the Chair for the Commissioner who made the amendment motion to explain a little more, but I'm a little confused by the kind of too many last-minute changes, you know, late-breaking changes, and then wanting to move up the timeline. So I'd be curious to understand that better, but I think maybe my confusion is also driven from not understanding, so I guess, let me put it this way. I know, you know, some of the conversations back in the spring around kind of the three-committee structure, and then we got the Administrator's overview nicely color-coded, which I find very helpful. So like, we got that a number of weeks ago. So I remember reading through that at the time, kind of understanding it. So what were the late-breaking changes in the last few days? Like, what were the substance of those changes?
So I think that's a question to me, as Chair of the Standing Rules Committee. I believe that the three changes were identified in the attached memo that was circulated yesterday, having to do the effective date, the Executive Committee, and the number of members on each of the standing committees. So I also want to clarify, if I can at this point, because again, a lot of things circulating out. We have an underlying motion, we have a motion to amend, which was seconded, which is currently what's before us. There have been comments raised about some other things, and I want it clear is, a motion to amend the underlying rules, which has the October 1 date, would have to come in after we rule on the, we vote on the motion for the amendment and the motion for the underlying acceptance of the rules, and would require a two-thirds majority under our rules. A motion to table to a date certain can be made at any time, even before we rule on the motion or the motion to amend, and only requires a majority vote. Did I clarify that? Okay. Where am I? Yes, I know, I'm trying to get the right sequence here. I think Commissioner Antor was next.
Thank you, Chair. I'm okay with the spirit of the amendment. I just think that we need to tap the brakes again a little bit. You know, we've had the opportunity, the Commissioners do, I was able to attend a few Standing Rules Committee meetings, even though I'm not on that committee, and I got to hear some things firsthand. And I think by maybe pushing this out a little bit further, having another meeting, I would encourage any Commissioners that can to attend that. You may not want a whole roomful of a bunch of us in there, but it, you know, it's very helpful for me. And I would just say, I have a feeling there's going to be another motion coming in front of us that I think might be a little more palatable for me, so I'm going to vote no on the amendment and hear what might be coming forward. Thank you.
Okay. I think Commissioner Pakla was next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In speaking on the amendment that is currently on the table from Commissioner Hennessy, I'm reflective of the memo that was sent to us on August 22nd from Mr. Vanderberg. And reading through that, I see three very relevant points that lead me to support the amendment that's on the table here. First is that the new committee structure would allow more, would transition more work to the committee level. And I think in reading through that paragraph, looking at the notion that we will have better, higher-level strategic deliberations and decisions, that to me is something that simply just can't wait to 2025. The notion of increasing the quality of oversight is the third bullet point that's there, and it says, quote, "In a two-committee system, there are limitations on time allocated for discussion," and I think that is related to the first bullet point about transitioning more work to the committee level. And finally, the second bullet there is to rebalance the workload. And when I think about all three of those bullets taken together, as for the rationale for the new committee structure, that has been on conversation since March of this year or earlier, those are things that, to me, can't wait until 2025. They're things that we need to address right now, they're things that are currently an issue with our current committee structure, and waiting another year and change for that to take place doesn't seem like it's valuing the work that has been done already. that has been done already in our board. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Diaz is next.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to just say that I completely agree with Commissioner Hildebrand. I do think that we need to have a little bit more time to, clearly, to have more internal discussions. But I also support Commissioner Hennessy's amendment, echoing what Commissioner Pakla said. I mean, I was, my district is one of those new districts that was created after redistricting, and this committee, this board was expanded to 21 commissioners. And my understanding was that these changes are going to be made in time for us to be able to implement that this term. And so with that being said, definitely open to hearing more discussion around our standing rules, but if nothing else, if no other changes are made, at the very least, I think it's prudent upon us to make these go into effect starting next year on January 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Commissioner McLeod, I think you're next. You probably were before this one, but sorry about that.
Thank you, Chair. I'm okay with not being called in order. That's totally fine. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I am another member that sat on the Subcommittee for the Standing Rules, and one of the main reasons that I did not vote in support of this to move forward was the date change. There were some other reasons, but that was one of the main reasons, because just so that you all understand, I mean, this change was not in our previous versions of the rules that we were considering. This was something that was cast upon us yesterday morning, that this change was included in there. So I had been doing the work of the committee with understanding that these rules would go into effect January 1st of 2024. So that change was a no-go for me, and not because I'm just, you know, trying to be combative, but I think that there are so many things in these rules that do need to go into effect January 1st, because again, I reiterate what Commissioner Diaz said, we now have 21 districts, and that took place as of the last election. That didn't take place as of, you know, the 2025 election, when we, or, excuse me, the 2024 election, when we will, you know, be implementing these changes according to the current date that's in there. There's so many things, as Chris, excuse me, as Commissioner Pakla stated so eloquently, that there are many things that are in these changes that we need to enact sooner than 2025. And so I think when taking all of those things together, that it makes sense, even if the committee structure is something that needs to take a little bit more time to vet out, that at least provides us with the opportunity to move forward with the things that are very critical for us to be able to, you know, have a revised executive board structure, for us to, you know, move forward with some of the other really critical changes that were in your, and Commissioner Vanderberg's, excuse me, and Administrator Vanderberg's notice that he sent out on August 22nd. So again, I think that the changes that are in here are overall good, and it would be great to have more time, but the way our rules are set up, we don't currently have time. But I think that, you know, moving forward with the things that we can move forward with are really important, because why should we continue to operate in an ineffective way according to the standing rules that are in effect now, if we can make some changes now that would allow us to operate more efficiently next year?
Thank you. Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. I move to postpone to a certain date, November 30. I think we have some time to sort it out, and I believe, if I'm correct, that's how I can do that in order, and that is correct?
So I think that's a motion to table to a date certain, postponed to a certain date, Rule 14 of Roberts, to November 30. Okay. So I would rule that in order, can be raised at any time, and is debatable, amendable, and can be voted on before we vote on the underlying motions to amend in the underlying motion. And since it's to a date certain, I think it is compliant with our underlying rules, which otherwise calls to do this by the 1st of October. We are still in deliberation, so I would rule it as in order. So currently, it takes precedence as a motion to postpone to November 30. And is that supported?
Supported.
Supported over here somewhere. Commissioner Merchant. Now, that is debatable. Is there debate on that motion? Commissioner Wooden?
Mainly a point of clarification. So is it the opinion of the Chair that, given the April standing rules update gave us a date to have the second round of updates, that has been presented to the board by that, before that date, and there is a motion to postpone, should this matter be taken up by the date certain, November 20th, it will still only require, pardon?
30th.
30th. Will it still require a simple majority, or by the fact that it's past that date, will it now require a two-thirds majority?
Simple majority.
Simple majority.
That's my ruling. Commissioner Coleman, now you.
So I think I'm just a little, like, tactically confused, so I just want to say what I think.
That's my turn.
So correct me if I'm off on this, Mr. Chair. So the new motion is to table the whole thing until November 30th. So that would include the amendment that we were previously considering would have to then be tabled to November 30th. And so if we vote in favor, the whole kit and caboodle moves to November 30th. If we vote against, then we take up the amendment and the underlying, and then the underlying is kind of up or down, we either accept the standing rule changes, or we say, like, we don't like these standing rule changes, and we vote against them, in which case we just remain with the existing standing rules if we end up taking it up now.
Okay, so I will clarify what I understand I ruled, which is currently there is a motion to adopt the standing rules as submitted by the Standing Rules Committee. There is a motion to amend that, which was supported, which is before us currently as well. There's now a motion to postpone, which I would read to be, and rule to be, a postponement of the current status of deliberations to November 30. So on November 30, it'd be on the agenda, and we will continue on where we are right now, which is a motion to amend the underlying standing rules motion. And then we will go on and rule on that, unless there's some other procedural ruling, after which we will then take up the underlying motion on the standing rules as submitted, or as amended. Okay? If we don't approve the standing rules at all, then we are left with what we have in the current standing rules. That's correct.
Thank you.
Now, I think that Commissioner Baker was next.
So I would have been in support of Commissioner Hennessy's amendment. I don't see the point of postponing the work for a future group of people, when it's, we've just determined this to be, and if a more efficient county government. If we postpone till November 30th, would we be, and we made the decision at that time to go with Commissioner Hennessy's amendment, would it be too late to implement those changes for January? In other words, if voting for a delay would cause us to, by default, have to wait until the following year? So I, and this is perhaps a question to administration, would administration have enough time after November 30th to implement changes for the work that would be needed if we ended up starting in January due to a support of Commissioner Hennessy's?
In other words, if it's postponed to November 30, and we then go ahead and do adopt it effective November, excuse me, January 1 of 2024, which is then a month or so later?
Yeah, one month.
Can we actually, in effect, process that?
Right, so we don't essentially get rid of this possibility by just the calendar?
Oh, you're wondering, is the motion to postpone a de facto denial of the motion? That's interesting.
Yes.
We had estimated that we could effectively transition in about three months, so 90 days. So I don't know that we have to hit a January 1. I mean, could we hit a March 1 or something like that? Or we could do the work now and be prepared for either January 1 or some other point in the future. So, I mean, we can work that out, I guess, when we land it, but obviously, just in scheduling and appointments and there's work to be done, we had thought probably three months would be a comfortable timeline.
Thank you, Chair. Everybody's going to be disappointed with what I'm about to say, but...
All right, then, let's move on.
Yeah. I support the notion of postponing and giving ourselves some more time. My concern is that I think it would be really valuable as we move forward, and that we know that we're going to deliberate on this, if we're all sort of in agreement that we're going to deliberate on this again in the next couple of months. I think I'd really be interested to know where this commission sits on whether or not we should adopt the change in the timeline. So, you know, I understand that we've got a motion that proceeds, which we'd have to defeat, and then vote on Commissioner Hennessy's amendment, and then we'd be back to where we started, I think, with an amended motion, or not amended motion. So as I have expressed, that I wouldn't be in favor of. But I just wanted to put that out there for this discussion, because it seems to me that it's valuable. If, with, absent that conversation, we're going to spend the next two months deliberating over the question of the timeline, and it seems to me that we could have the opinion of the board today.
So if I'm hearing you, you speak in favor of saying no to the motion to postpone, voting on the motion to amend, knowing what the board's will is on that?
And postponing that, yes.
And then you're going to raise a motion to postpone?
Sure, yeah. Or Commissioner DeBoer can do it again, if she's willing and able.
This is why we have Roberts in the...
Can the commissioner withdraw her motion?
Well, she can, but it is...
If she wishes?
She wishes, but it's also supported.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I understand this properly?
You may, but you're not obligated to withdraw it.
I want to understand Ben, or Commissioner Green's comment properly. So if I withdraw my postpone to a certain time, we vote on the amendment, which only requires a majority, correct?
That's correct.
And then I move a motion to postpone indefinitely on the underlining motion. Is that correct?
Well, I would conclude a motion to postpone indefinitely does not comply with the rules, which requires a date certain.
Sorry, definitely, to a certain time.
Yeah, okay.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, then I withdraw my postpone to a certain time.
That can be withdrawn only if the second also agrees to withdraw it. Who seconded it? Is that a second to...
Yes.
You're withdrawing.
Hey, I only have two extra sheets of paper for all these extra amendments.
All right. So for the board, we are back to the motion to amend the proposed rules. The proposed rules provide for an effective date starting January 1, 2025. The motion to amend is to change that only to an effective date of January 1, 2024. So now, we're back into that deliberation. Anyone else wish to address that motion to amend? Commissioner Baker?
Yes, as I briefly mentioned earlier, when we voted on April, I was under the impression that we are voting to spend this last few months in an effort to create a better work plan for this county government during this term. The, it appears to me that we have, that you all, the Standing Rules Committee, has created a more effective and responsive county government structure, and I see no reason to postpone that to a group of people who may not even include all of us, likely won't. So I don't know if I'll be sitting here in 2025. So voting for someone else to do work that I'm in fact not willing to do, I don't understand the rationale of that at all, especially considering that that new group of people in January could also vote by May 1 of 2025 to change the rules completely. So we are basically choosing to create a more effective government, to be run by different people for four months in 2025. I don't understand the rationale for this. I mean, if this is a more effective system, this group of people to do the work of the county, then we should get on it. That's it.
Call the question?
Don't get up and get a snack now, you'll miss everything.
All right. There's been a motion to call the question, which would terminate further deliberation, and on this motion to amend, that would require a second and can be approved only on a two-thirds vote. So is there support for that motion to call the question? Katie? I'm sorry. Commissioner DeBoer supported the motion.
Right.
Commissioner Wooden is sitting here to my left. I'm going to check with Roberts before I do anything. If it helps, Chair Stack, I was debatable. All right, so it requires a two-thirds vote to approve this particular calling of the question. So since I need two-thirds, it'll be a roll call vote. Again, the motion before us is a call to question, which would end deliberation on the motion to amend only. So a yes is to end debate, a no is to continue with debate.
Who made the motion?
The motion was made by Commissioner Antor, supported by Commissioner DeBoer.
Okay. Are you asking for the roll?
I'm asking for a roll call on that.
On the motion to call the question, Commissioners Green?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Merchant?
Yes.
DeBoer?
Yes.
Hildenbrand?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Burrell?
Yes.
Coleman?
No.
Vice Chair Breevy?
Yes.
Commissioners Teal?
Yes.
Sparks?
Oh, boy, he's not one of the choices.
I'm sorry. Yes.
McLeod?
No.
Hennessy?
No.
Oliver King?
No.
Legrand?
No.
Baker?
No.
Wooden?
No.
Pakla?
No.
Diaz?
Yes.
Boujack?
Yes.
Chair Stack?
My vote doesn't matter, but I'll say yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 13 yays, nine nays. The motion fails. The call to question is not adopted.
So we are up to, yes, who is, who had, I'm sorry, on the amendment motion, who had not addressed that issue yet, wanted to yet? Mr. Coleman?
I just, so I, I'm still a...
Just so it's clear, we're back into debating...
The amendment.
The motion to amend the effective date. You're on.
Thank you. So I am still perplexed, I think, although I'm having trouble holding on to the plot here. But the, so I'm a little confused with the notion that too many late-breaking changes was rushed, but then we ought to rush the implementation of the plan. So that perplexes me. But I guess I would like to address the second portion of the amendment on the board must adopt standing rules no later than the first meeting in May every odd year. I thought that was already our protocol. What is that part of the amendment changing compared to the existing standing rules?
Well, I understood the motion to amend would not, or does not, as it currently stated, affect the standing rules recommendation, which would put the standing rules up for review on or before May, first meeting in May... on or before May, first meeting in May of 2025, and then every two years thereafter. That would not be affected by the motion to amend.
Why is that language in there, then?
Corporate counsel is asked to respond.
I think it's just a, actually, I think it's just confusion. There was a red line in that second paragraph from a, we dealt with that in August. So, that's not a late-breaking change of last night or yesterday. Originally, the committee had at one point talked about doing it every four years. They backed out of that, so that change did not happen yesterday. It's going to, it's a two-year review.
So, that second paragraph, red letters, is actually the current standing rules from April or May, whenever we passed those updates?
It's the same language as in an earlier draft from the standing rules. The only change from the current rules is moving to May, because we had some troubles getting meetings in the first quarter during spring break. So, we shoved it down from April to May. But it is a two-year review, which is what we do now.
Which is the same, okay. Thank you.
All right. Back to the debate on the motion to amend. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. As the longest-serving member of the Legislative and Human Resources Committee, and someone who's been advocating for over 12 years for a change in this structure, I sincerely apologize to all of you, because I had no idea it'd be this complicated.
Well, there's our fall guy. All right. Any other commissioner wish to address the motion to amend at this time? Yes, Commissioner Hennessy. I think it's your second, because you made the motion.
Right. I will, I really have appreciated the discussion. It has been really very thorough. I don't think it's been repetitive at all. And so, I, you know, definitely did not want to close off this discussion, and that has continued to be interesting and informative. And I really support, there've been a lot of things that have been said, Commissioner Pakla, Commissioner McLeod, Commissioner Baker. But it really was, one thing I will repeat that Commissioner Baker said was that we really did delay the implementation or allowed this revision of the standing rules to a time certain, today's date, because it was to take effect and to be implemented during our two-year tenure on this board. And I think that that is still the right way to go if we're going to consider this. So, I certainly will support the amendment that I've proposed, which has been submitted in writing so that every commissioner is able to see it as well. Thank you.
All right. With that, I think we are ready to vote on the motion to amend, the underlying motion. So, the motion to amend would change the proposed standing rules to be effective as of January 1, 2024, instead of what's stated in the rules that are proposed at January 1, 2025. So, that's all we're voting on right now in the motion. It's a roll call, so Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And by the way, it's a simple majority on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the amendment to Rule 1 to make the rules effective January 1, 2024, Commissioners Green.
No.
Antor.
No.
Merchant.
No.
Seabor.
No.
Hildenbrand.
No.
Ponstein.
No.
Burl.
No.
Coleman.
No.
Vice Chair Breeby.
No.
Commissioners Teal.
No.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
No.
Chair Steck.
No.
Mr. Chair, you have nine yays, 12 nays. The motion fails. The amendment is not adopted.
All right. That puts us back into the underlying motions debate. Commissioner DeBoer.
I move to postpone to a certain time the underlying motion of the standing rules to a certain time, November 30.
Supported by Commissioner Merchant.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend that. I don't know if this is the time.
Oops.
Amend that motion, rather.
Okay, so, Commissioner Diaz, yes?
So, I'd like to, instead of giving the fact that Administrator Al said that they need three months to put this into effect, and that by moving this to the, I'm guessing that's the date of our last meeting in November. A month, I think, would be unfair to the staff administration. And so, I'd like to amend that date to the last date of our meeting in October so that at least we have two months for the administration to put this into effect. If I'm being honest, I think that we've had a lot of discussions around this, and I think a month, or a little over a month, should give us plenty of time for us to put our input in and have further discussions. So, I'm not sure what that date is. If you can help me out with that, but...
The last meeting in October is October 26.
Right, but this is to, she's put Commissioner DeBoer's, is we'd like to push this discussion further to November. I'd like to push it to October.
There's currently on the floor a motion to postpone the continued deliberation to November 30, 2023. You have made a motion to amend that motion to postpone, to postpone it until October 26, 2023. Got it? It is supported by that motion. So, now before us is a motion to amend the motion to postpone to October 26 of 2023. You want to point a clarifying, Commissioner Coleman?
I believe I'm commenting on the amendment to the postponement motion.
That is what's before us.
And I'm, I don't think I'm in support of that, because I'm not sure if the underlying standing rules changes don't take effect for like 15 months. I'm not sure what the difference is between October whatever and November whatever. So, I think I'm against the October whatever. Let's just wait, give a little more time for deliberation of whatever substantive issues there are that we're considering.
Because the motion to amend to go to effective date of January 1 of 24 did not pass, we're now dealing with an effective date proposed at January 1 of 25.
Right. That's correct, yes.
All right, okay. All right, I got it. Now, other commissioners commenting on the motion to amend the motion to postpone. Yes? Yeah. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you. I think what Commissioner Diaz is stating is the work has been done here, and we need to get this off of our plate sooner than later. So, postponing on the postponing, since we're not going to do it until later, just clears us off of our plate, is what I believe.
I would agree with that, but I would also say that I'm still in this, oh, sorry.
Just for clarity, you should comment to the board. And again, you comment to the board, Chair. Thank you. Commissioner Hilleben.
Thank you, Chair. Just, I think you've already addressed this, but I wanna make sure. Under the standing rules now that we're operating under, there's an October 1 deadline to complete our work on the standing rules discussion.
Correct.
So, I don't know my parliamentary procedure as good as I should, but if we postpone to a date October or November, are we in conflict with the standing rules in which we're operating under, which requires us to be done with this discussion by October 1?
It is the board chair's ruling that because the motion to postpone is to a date certain, that we are still in compliance with our rules. We're in the deliberation yet. If it was to a date uncertain or open-ended, I would deem that to be out of order. All right. Motion to amend the motion to postpone. Further comments? Okay, so, I think that is probably a roll call vote. So, currently, we're voting on the motion to amend the motion to postpone, to make the motion to postpone to the date certain of October 26.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to amend the amendment, or on the motion to amend the motion to postpone to October 26, 2023, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
No.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
No.
Hildenbrand.
No.
Ponstein. Burl.
No.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Teal.
No.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy. Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
No.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 13 yays, eight nays. The motion passes. The amendment to the motion to postpone is to October 26, 2023, passes.
Okay. Now, where are we? We have a motion to amend, or excuse me, a motion to postpone further deliberation on the underlying motion for approval of the rules. It is to postpone it until October 26 meeting. That's what's before us. Any further comments on that motion? If not, that too is a roll call. So, will you take the roll call vote on the motion to postpone further deliberation on the motion to approve the standing rules to October 26, 2023?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to postpone...
Excuse me, hold on. It's a two-thirds vote on an actual motion to postpone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to postpone to October 26, 2023, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Ponstein.
No.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breeby, Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod. Hennessy.
No.
Oliver King.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yays, two nays. The motion passes. The question is postponed to October 26, 2023.
All right. What that means, of course, is we get to do this all over again. But let me just comment, I mean, this is a big lift. This is a huge change. As was commented, we've operated under the existing rules and structures for many years. Of course, we didn't have 21 members, as we now have. And so, this is in the opportunity that this board has seriously looked at this question. Again, my hat's off to the committee who's put a lot of work into evaluating and analyzing how we can best do the work of the board through a different structure. And while how we end up yet still remains to be determined on October 26, thank you for your work. Thank you for the whole board's continued attention to this issue. And we'll keep our ears and eyes open and continue to deliberate and talk about this so that we can come back and hopefully land on something that all of us, most of us, a majority of us can agree upon. So, thank you. Can't adjourn yet. Now, with that, that is the last of our resolutions. We'll move to the next item, which is public comment. This is our second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to address us on matters that are within our general jurisdiction, you may do so at this time. Please identify yourself and your address, and you have up to three minutes.
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones. I prefer Dee Jones. I stay at 967 Temerack. So, you guys see me with this mask on. And they usually, usually when people have masks, it's usually the police are coming, or you tuck in your purse or something like that. And I actually like to wear these masks with my face as warm. I'm not a stick-up guy. Do know some people who stick some people up and stuff like that. I know this mask can make people uncomfortable. But it's uncomfortable how the government has...
DeAndre, you know the sheriff's right behind you.
I know. But I know it's uncomfortable how like the government has, I would say, stuck people up for resources and not giving people resources, and snatching people's resources. And I actually just witnessed history today of you guys actually getting some, I would say, bipartisan legislation kind of going. I never would think I would actually sit in a hall. I'm very, very interested in politics, and I know politics. But you guys actually got some work done today in front of everybody, and you still got a decision to make on that. But why I have this mask on is just because I just think about this people that are in circumstances like, we had to fool people here. And like, people wear masks and they stick people up for food. But you don't know that politics or some of the, I'm not gonna say you guys, but federal politics and people that are powerful, then those people that work in the Federal Reserve. Usually, those things and their decisions usually make people have to put masks on like this, or they had to go stick people up. But then they end up in a criminal justice system where they have to deal with the sheriffs and things like that. So, I do wanna say that, you know, I got a nice haircut. I was looking nice. You guys got haircuts. You got your hair done. I see I got your curls. You got your haircut, too. I like looking nice, too. And I know this is more comfortable when I speak like this. And I just know there's a lot of people that face barriers and have to put on masks, and people wear masks in society a lot. And it's because of politics. It's because the people don't care. It's because of the lack of cares. And like I said, people get robbed every day, whether it's politicians robbing communities for resources or robbing people for opportunities. It does happen. Regardless of party, it does happen. And so, I just wanted to put that on and just speak to you guys. It's because every day, man, people have to go through, people literally, you guys make, have power. And you guys have power over everybody's life, my everyday life. Like, I care about my life. I'm very self-conscious. I'm not gonna lie. I'm very self-conscious. I'm aware that I create my reality. I know that the things that I put out to the universe comes back in. I'm not a religious person. I'm kinda on the lines of Commissioner Diaz. I'm a very spiritual person, and I'm Haitian. My family does voodoo, so, you know, I don't really get into that stuff. But I see the world differently. And I just wore a mask because I'm a very genuine person, but I don't wear masks for society. I am who I am, and I just wanted to come to you guys. And I don't know if it made you uncomfortable to see Dee Jones with a mask, but I didn't come here to stick anybody up. I just came here to make a point, and I'm pretty sure you guys got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you again, Commissioner Steck, Chairman Steck. Mr. Adams whispered in my ear before he left that they do not allocate at this time any money going to Planned Parenthood. So, I say an emphatic, emotional amen to that. Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein, for your bold statement about life. Also want to acknowledge Democrat Karen Whitsett from the east side of the state, who has boldly and courageously given her opposition to the murderous legislation coming out of Lansing called the Reproductive Health Act. I am very encouraged that some people, especially politicians, are standing up for life. But as this body changes over the years, I would again encourage you, if you are here, for this future to continue, to not let that happen. Abortion is not health care. It's murder. Two weeks ago, I shared with you how many murders Thomas Gordon, Two weeks ago, I shared with you how many murders Thomas Gordon, how many lives Thomas Gordon butchered at three-twenty East Fulton. Fifty-five thousand. One man, fifty-five thousand. Let that ruminate in your thinking. Since nineteen-seventy-three, over a million and a half Michiganders have been murdered through abortion. I could only get the last eleven years of murders in Kent County, but that is fourteen thousand, two-hundred-and-eighteen. Just let that sink in. Let me say again, if you, as an elected official, give to or receive assistance from Planned Parenthood, which I know many politicians do, I'm not pointing anyone out here, but again, according to scriptures, you're an accomplice to murder. And again, this is what it looks like. I want to show the audience this time.
You should address the board. Thank you.
Forgive me, Chairman. This is what it looks like. That is not health care. Please continue to stop funding or not start funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Rodney Harrison here, one-one-eight-eight-one Fruit Ridge Avenue, Kent City, Michigan. I'm here to speak to you on ethics and possibly a ethics committee, if you such have one. My youngest boy was mentally and physically assaulted in Sparta schools October ninth, two thousand and fourteen, uncovered up by three staff members. It was covered up by the local talent in Sparta, the Michigan State Police, Chris Becker, our elected county prosecutor, First Lieutenant Commander Chris McIntyre, Sixth District, Michigan State Police, First Lieutenant Commander Brody Bisher, MSP Internal Affairs. And I've been reaching out to our Sheriff's Department, and I'm glad you mentioned Sheriff Michelle LaJoy is right here in the back. And I just sent an email out yesterday to Mr. Vandenberg and to Mr. Antor with everybody that I've been doing. And I've been blessed with a lot of people in my life. One is Lieutenant, or excuse me, retired Captain E.J. Johnson of the Sheriff's Department. Ms. Danielle Castillo, Sixty-third District Courthouse Administrator. Danielle is a godsend. She told me, Rod, you need to appeal this. I was convicted of stalking a school board member, addressing my First Amendment rights at school board meetings. I spent a year in jail for that. Right now, I'm in the Seventeenth Circuit Court with Honorable Judge J. Joseph Rossi on one-man grand jury on racketeering enterprise, willful neglect of duty, and malfeasance, malicious in office. And all these public officials, every one of you oversee. I would like to talk to whoever's in charge of the Ethics Committee. This is going to get ugly. I'm not going away. I have a briefcase full of documents, one of five. Honorable Judge Rossi and I, yeah, I think how to word this best, have had quite heated pissing matches in his courtroom on a record, and we respect each other. I expect the same here. Honorable Judge Rossi is under your supervision. Jeffy O'Hare at Sixty-third is under your supervision. Sheriff Michelle LaJoy Young is under your supervision. I'm asking for some help. I don't need it because I got the Holy Spirit right here in the courtroom with me, and I'm not afraid of nobody except Him. So, if we can talk, if we can talk about Ethics Committee, of who could help me, or who wants to get involved, or who doesn't want to get involved, I don't care, because all of you will be held accountable if you do not act.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? I don't see anyone else. We'll then move to our administrator's report.
All right. I have a few comments this morning. Would also, I'd like to mention that ten-one deadline is approaching, which is important from a couple of different standpoints. Ten-one was the deadline to have all of our thirty ARPA agreements signed, and all are in a position to move forward. I'm not sure they'll hit exactly ten-one, three or four of them, but each group, I think, has provided the information necessary to move forward. Josh will be, again, providing another update soon, and those can be found in my weekly message of the board. And we've also been asked to present on three or four items at LHR committee meetings, so we'll be doing that as well. The other ten-one deadline that's looming is the federal budget, and it's looking less and less likely like we're going to have a federal budget. That does set into motion things that happen here at the county level as well. So, we have an internal team that's been looking at that. We do have a substantial amount of federal pass-through money that passes through the state to fund more of our human service-type operations in the county. Kent County government is not funded to simply cover federal government lack of revenue coming into us. And so, basically, what we look for is a nod from the feds, or more commonly from the states, to say, yeah, we're going to make you whole. Our, our union contracts do require us to hold off two weeks before making any changes. We, we are evaluating what services could be impacted, what positions could be impacted, and then ultimately need to make a judgment call. But that, that's not going to happen today or tomorrow. But there are notice provisions that we may need to follow. We're just trying to, we're in constant touch with our federal lobbyists. We're, we're doing our best to ascertain what's likely to happen and then make sure that we react accordingly as Kent County. Okay, so, a couple other items. And, okay, so, we don't respond to public comment here. There's good reasons for that. But we have a viewing audience. We have people in the room. We have commissioners. Some of you have been around longer than others. If there's a factual point to be made, I feel obligated to make it. And so, there's a couple factual points I will make. The Board of Commissioners nor the county administration, we do not have any supervisory or operational control over countywide elected officials. Four of our elected officials get their responsi- their operational authority directly from the Michigan Constitution, and the Drain Commissioner gets his operational authority from Michigan statute. The, the courts get their operational authority directly from the Michigan Constitution. The County Board of Commissioners and the county administrator have authority over the funds that fund all aspects of county government. I just didn't want anybody viewing to have a wrong interpretation of county Board of Commissioners authority. And then the second thing, the, the issue regarding funding of Planned Parenthood, there are many counties in Michigan that act as a pass-through for MDHHS money that goes from MDHHS to Planned Parenthood. At one time, this was a practice in Kent County. This ended the first time I served for Kent County. So, it's been over twenty years that a different organization outside of Kent County has taken on that role. What we will plan to do in consultation with Chair Steck is to set up probably three informational meetings on the rules to happen before your meeting on October twenty-six so that everybody can be, have a chance to dig in and ask questions and make sure everyone's up to speed on, on how that would all work prior to your reconvening on this issue on October twenty-six. It was great to see a number of you at the ribbon cutting for the new fleet maintenance facility. You know, that's the third facility to be completed over the last two years, along with the parks facility and then the Northern Services Facility. And so, just really pleased with the high-quality work that our, just our team has done, you know, especially, you know, kind of facilities leading the way, but also purchasing and fiscal and the, the support of the board. But we're turning out some high-quality facilities with growth built in to meet the needs of the fastest-growing county in Michigan. A number of us are going to Steve Warren's Going-Away Party tonight. The long-term County Road Commission Director and the Assistant Director before that. Steve has just had exemplary public service, and we've appreciated him much over these years. So, we'll look forward to that event tonight. And, oh, one last thing. The, you should have all received a futuring survey, so we're beginning the process of launching that. Four hundred of our stakeholders have been asked to complete that survey, and if anyone has any ideas and others that should, we would be eager to send them surveys as well. But if you could take the time, it won't take you long, and it's valuable information as we kind of provide the benchmark information to start that process. And, oh, yes, almost forgot. But the numbers, we do have kind of the final, final numbers for our facilities, space needs, facilities recommendation. You'll be getting those shortly, and we continue to be on a October track for that to come to you for consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Al. That brings us to item eleven, reports. Any commissioner have a report? Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. The Brownfield Advisory Committee met last week, and for its first discussion, deliberated several aspects from how the expansion of state law to incorporate housing into a Brownfield plan directly can be utilized, cooperation with local units of government, any kind of compliance required, and, and different ways to form public-private partnership to utilize the impact of this Brownfield authority if this board so decides to do so. So, I believe our next meeting is next month, and we will, and it's the goal to accomplish the charge bestowed to us by the chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So, the John Baugh Zoo, I sat on the Finance Committee and Facilities, along with the Full Committee. Two of those have met in the past month. Just want to highlight one thing, not to get so much into the zoo, but I had an opportunity to join staff in hearing Dr. Ben Freeman speak to the John Baugh Zoo staff. And the, the zoo is more than just cages with animals in it or exhibits and that. Dr. Ben Freeman works with the Wild Chimpanzee Foundation. He's based out of Liberia, Africa, and he's working on conservation efforts in the Gravel Crone National Park. And it was, well, I was pleased and hope everyone in the, in the county is, is that part of the conservation dollars that the zoo collects through various different means. We fund one of the teams that are in that national park, and their goal and their purpose is to protect the lives of the species of chimpanzees that are there and the habitat that they need to survive. And, you know, we live in a great world, and, you know, we choose to protect a lot of things. And I was just happy to see that that was on the protection list and a priority for the zoo. The other thing, when it come to the budget, you know, everyone's facing inflation. There's many factors, supply chains, hiring, paying your staff more. So, our budget's a little out of line. Nothing to be concerned about. We've got the cost to cover that. But the one thing I want to did, you know, highlight is when Peter's here, he always talks that, you know, someday, hopefully, we can get to a million visitors. But we're not there yet. Our goal for this year was six hundred thousand visitors coming through those gates into our county, spending money, enjoying themselves. We went well over that. We have already surpassed seven hundred thousand visitors that have come through those gates of the zoo, which is an asset for, I don't want to just say Kent County, but all of West Michigan and the state of Michigan. So, I just wanted to give that brief for Pearl.
Thank you. Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair Steck. The Fire Commission met on nine fifteen and reviewed a contract change order for a fire truck for the Soul and Fire Department. And interesting to note is that the technologies that are being used with, with firefighting and fire trucks is now going to the next phase, away from manually-controlled actuators to computer-controlled actuators, which actually gives firefighters valuable seconds to respond to fires. So, an interesting thing going on with the Fire Commission, and appreciate being a part of that Fire Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll provide just a brief update from the Grand Valley Metro Council Policy Subcommittee. We met for the first time in a couple of months, last week Wednesday. We approved projects and updates to the Transportation Improvement Plan and received some highlights of the upcoming work that I thought would be useful for the board to hear. First, sometime in twenty-twenty-four, one-thirty-one is going to be undergoing repairs from Twenty-Eighth Street up to Pearl as part of a state-level MDOT-led project. There will be significant impacts to transit up that corridor for a couple of weeks at a time. They're going to be shutting down each direction for a couple of weeks at a time. So, something for us to note in particular for those of us that are in the southern part of the county coming up to commission meetings. We approved a variety of funding allocations for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. Much of it was reallocating federal funds into different buckets. But we may recall that we had a resolution early this year to make sure that we didn't have any COVID funds clawed back. Not everybody in the county was as fortunate as we were to have not, none of our funds clawed back. The GV Metro Council and Rapid Transit Master Plan had some funding revoked, so that was part of the movement of funds. And finally, based on the twenty-twenty census, there was a smoothing process done with our mapping, which resulted in some reclassification of what is considered a rural and an urban part of our county. There's a new map that's available for, from the, the Grand Valley Metro Council. But of particular note, there are some newly-defined urban or near-urban areas, near Sparta Township, Wright Township, Byron Township in Kent County, and some newly-defined small urban areas in Sparta, Allendale, and Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? If not, we'll move on to miscellaneous. Any commissioner have a miscellaneous item? Commissioner Ponstein.
On a happy note, Pulaski Days opens this weekend, and it will open with the ceremonies, with the flag raising, the introduction of the queens, the national anthems of both the United States and Poland, at two o'clock Sunday afternoon at Diamond Street Hall. And it's, it's always a good time. And this is, last year was the fiftieth anniversary. So, we are at fifty-one and still not done. So, feel free to join us. The parade will be the following Saturday at kickoff on the northeast side of the town. So, that's my really happy news. My other one is more informative, and that is the depart- the Salvation Army in conjunction with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Meridian Insurance, and the MPCA, which is Health Plans, Health Plan Group, is going to be sponsoring a renewal, enrollment renewal for Medicaid people. It's estimated that about thirty percent of the people may not have re-enrolled, as is required at this point, for Medicaid and maybe other benefits like SNAP. And so, that's going to be offered this Saturday from ten to two at the Salvation Army CROC Center at twenty-five-hundred South Division Avenue. There will be people there to help navigate and to help people make these applications. And even if you have missed your own renewal period, for the people in the public who have, you have up to ninety days afterwards to, to re-enroll. So, this is a really helpful thing. It's really good to get the word out among those people for whom it might be necessary. So, Saturday, ten to two, Salvation Army CROC Center, and there'll be plenty of navigators to help. And there are certain requirements paper-wise to bring in in terms of ID and income substantiation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Hennessy. That took a good part of what I was going to say away, so I wanted to yield to you. So, I just want to make, you know, these comments, and for some of you, it may be uncomfortable, but for the past year, Daniel Scott's been coming here talking about the abortion issue. And, and I know it's a polarizing issue in this country. And, and I don't want to argue that point today, but the one point that, you know, I do want to make is I am pro-life. I don't make any excuses for that. But it's just the sheer amount. And you don't even have to focus it on that, but if you look at the amount of abortions that happen, we often hear about white privilege from housing to food and everything else. The white Caucasian population is the least amount of people that have to use those services that we call abortion. Too often, it's targeted at the minorities and those that can't afford proper health care and, or just find it easier not to have that child. That's wrong. I've been a strong supporter of the Pregnancy Resource Center and other centers that want to make the opportunity, if someone wants to have a child, they should have equal rights across the board, and that's true equity. And maybe that's something we can work on as a county, is assuring that people would want to have children, that the first option isn't an abortion, but to bring that to term and have the resources to have a child come into this world that will have an abundant life that we all can be proud of. And that's all I'm going to say. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Ditto, Commissioner Ponstein. Thank you, Pastor. I wanted to thank Kent County Sheriff Deputy Ryan Wheeler for all his support and help, along with Kent County Sheriff's Department in general, Grand Rapids Police Department, Michigan State Police Department, and all the area fire departments that got us safely from Brands on Leonard Street up to Cedar Springs as part of our Freedom Crews. So, all volunteer program and event, and we had a limo bus that was full of Gold Star families, and those are people that lost their loved ones in combat, along with a couple of World War II veterans. And them seeing the police presence and the fire presence along the route, I was on the limo bus with them, and it just gave them such a warm feeling, is that our kids aren't going to be forgotten. And sometimes it's as simple as a fire truck with its lights going as a reminder, and all the flags along the way. So, we really appreciate it. Sheriff, thank you so much for allowing Ryan to be a part of this. He does a great job, and I just really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? Yes, Commissioner Baker.
Two points. First, on October 10th at 5:30, Commissioner Oliver King and I are hosting Sheriff's Office in our community, Getting to Know the County Government Series. We'll be at 1515 Madison where the NAACP offices are for 5:37, and anyone here is welcome to join us. Secondly, I, on, this is the end of our ninth month on this commission, and when people ask me how the commission is compared to the school board, I have talked glowingly about the relationships of, of this commission, that we have, even though it's a partisan elected position, we have all gotten along very well. We've all considered the work of our, of this commission to be that of improving the lives of people that live in this county. And when we've had disagreements, they have not been on party lines. Today was the first time we've ever had a party-line vote since I've been on it, and I don't know why. I hope at some point I understand what that rationale was. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? All right, I see none. That means we get to move to the next item. Commissioner Diaz has a motion for us.
Thank you, Chair. I move that we adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to Thursday, October 12th, 2023, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
All that support say yes. We are adjourned. Thank you all.